Mayor Mac Planning Board for November fifteenth, twenty sixteen. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting is December sixteenth, uh, December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, seven PM in this room. No need to make any appointments of alternates tonight since we don't have any voting items. We only have one single item on our agenda. Before we get there and introduce that, I think that it makes sense for planning board members to at least think about whether you want to go sit over there to watch the presentation instead of sitting here and kind of looking sideways, but do whatever you think suits you. And with that, let me introduce item two on our agenda, which is what are complete streets and how can they benefit our town, which is a presentation by Rebecca Harris, Director of Transport NH.
Thank you.
Thank you, and come on forward. Thank you for coming to speak to us tonight and making the presentation. I know that we've only got a handful of people here, but I do know that a lot of people watch our meetings on the Merrimack Television, so they'll get a chance to see what you've got, even though it's a nice rainy November night.
I know. I was just commenting that I don't think a driverless car could do-
Rebecca, excuse me.
You gotta go up to a microphone.
You've gotta speak to a microphone, yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Um, I, I don't think a driverless car could do what I had to do to get here tonight, driving on, on leaf-covered, wet, dark streets.
Uh, and we've got a lot of those. So, I'm gonna be one of them that moves around to the side there, so with that, I'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
Although you've got a screen up there as well, I suppose.
It's pretty small.
Yeah. So, alright, I... Ready? Okay. Well, I apologize, I forgot to change the title of this slide, but this is basically a, a repeat of the regional Complete Streets events that I did with our partners across the state. We did ten Complete Streets events, explaining what complete streets are and what the benefits are. So, I modified it a little bit for your benefit, but it's, it's mostly the same. So, what are complete streets? They're those, obviously, that enable safe and convenient access for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities. You could take an incremental approach to complete streets, just by putting, using some paint when you're repaving a road or re-striping a road. You can add, um, a bike lane. This is Chestnut Street in Manchester. If you look beyond this intersection, you'll see there's a bike lane on the right side, and on this side of the intersection, there's a, a shared arrow, or sometimes called a sharrow, which shows that bicycles are allowed to share the lane with vehicles. Or you could take the major renovation approach, like Concord did with their big Main Street project, multi-million dollar project. Just cut the ribbon on this last week. It's gorgeous. It's, it's simply amazing, and they had a lot of increase in business both after and during construction. They actually had over a dozen new businesses open up during construction. So what are some of the benefits of complete streets? People have seen, well, businesses see increased retail sales when there's enhanced infrastructure for bicyclists and pedestrians. People will stop and shop, or stop and dine, instead of driving straight through. Increased tourism. Bicyclists are sometimes known as wallets on wheels. And, so, by having our beautiful scenic trails connect into the towns with, with infrastructure improvements, you'll see increased tourism dollars coming into the town centers. Increased property values. There are several studies that have shown that both the commercial and residential property values near walkable, bikable, and transit-friendly streets increases those property values. I have some specific studies, and I can, I can send those to you afterwards. In fact, Nelson, you remember the handout that you got after the Nashua event?
Well, I got a lot of handouts.
Yeah, right. Well, I'll send that to you, and you can pass that around.
Yeah.
You can, you can distribute it by email. It'll be a PDF file, and have clickable links on these studies. Increased safety. So, here's a picture of a road, not in New England, but it gives me the shivers every time I look at this. Here's a, a mother and her child trying to cross this road to get to their apartment or wherever, and you can see the skid marks from previous close encounters. So, they, you know, a road, sometimes a road's deemed successful if it's not congested, but I, there are a lot of people who would say that this road is not successful. One of the benefits of complete streets is to help attract people in the working age. Our labor force in New Hampshire is going to decrease by, on average, a ten percent across the state between, by, by twenty thirty, and in Hillsborough County, it'll be decreasing by five and a half percent. And you can see Carroll County is anticipating a decrease of twenty-four and a half percent. At the same time, we're seeing the sixty-five and older population increase dramatically. Hillsborough County is going to go from ten point six percent to twenty-one point three percent by twenty thirty. So having streets that are safe and accessible for people of all ages and abilities is really important. It's important to attract millennials to your city, it's important, cities and towns in New Hampshire, and it's important to make communities that are age-friendly, so people of all ages feel comfortable and safe. Public health has improved when you have places that encourage walking and biking. In fact, at the, a recent, uh, recent hearings on a Complete Streets bill, the Director of Public Health, part of New Hampshire DHHS, came and gave a really wonderful presentation on how complete streets would lead to better outcomes in health. Transport New Hampshire is part of a coalition that is working towards statewide complete streets policy, as well as encouraging communities to adopt local policies and, um, local projects, complete streets, infrastructure projects. So this is just a, a listing of, of some of our coalition members. So what are some examples of complete streets projects? Well, Berlin had to redo the, the big truck route through the city, and at the same time, it was the, the most popular walking route. It was a loop that everyone loved to, to take their daily walks on. And so they were able to redesign the street so that it was safer for trucks, but also put in a sidewalk, so it was safer for pedestrians at the same time, before they were walking on the shoulder. And so, and Berlin paid with, for this with the city's budget. They didn't use any federal funds for this. Colbrook needed to redo, they basically needed to dig up downtown to fix the water and sewer. And they said, "Well, while we're doing this, why don't we put in some complete streets improvements, and see if we can attract more tourists up to this northern location?" And they got a big grant to do it, and they're, it's under construction right now. Concord, as you heard, has done an amazing job of making their main street a desirable place to be, and they're seeing an increase in retail sales, and like I said, more businesses are opening up, but people just love it. Dover has been doing complete streets projects since before it was called Complete Streets, and they just recently finished Silver Street here, which is gorgeous. They, they put in sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes on both sides, and bus pullouts. And it is quickly becoming the most desirable place in the town, in the city of Dover. Also, I might add that Dover is the fastest-growing city in New Hampshire. I'm not, not saying cause and effect, but, but they, they do like to make an attractive place for people to, to stop, to, for people to work, and live, and play, and for, to encourage people to stop and not just drive through. Hinsdale became the seventh, um, town municipality in New Hampshire to have a complete streets municipal policy. They just, this summer, passed their policy, and so they're getting ready to start some projects. Keene passed a policy last year, and they held a complete streets demo, a one-day demo, and I have a, a three-minute video I can show you. It's, it's a lot of fun. Laconia put in a lot of new crosswalks and sidewalks, and they're connecting to their, to the famous WOW Trail, which is very popular with tourists. In fact, that, the picture earlier along the lake, that was the WOW Trail. Lebanon has, um, a complete streets policy under consideration by their city council, and they're, they have completed a visioning process for their downtown area. They're gonna make it a lot more, um, walkable, bike-ped friendly, and, um, just make it more attractive to, to, for people to come and, and stop, and spend money, and attract more businesses. Even Litchfield has put in a multi-use path along Albuquerque Avenue, and it's a really popular place for people to bicycle and walk with access to the State Forest and other amenities. London Dairy has the Woodmont Commons Project under consideration at the proposed exit four A. It's a billion-dollar development proposed, and it's going to be bike-ped frie-, bike-ped and transit-friendly with complete streets right from the design. Manchester has been busy putting in bike lanes. This is Wellington Road. The Public Works Department there is very friendly towards, towards bicycles and pedestrians, and they have just made it a, an internal policy that whenever they repave a street, they look to see if it makes sense to put in a bike lane. If it does, they just do. And they have just recently finished a bike-ped master plan, and Public Works did that for the city of Manchester. Nashua worked with Heal, New Hampshire, and, um, the Y and, um, the Public Health Department there on a, oh, and in Nashua Regional Planning Commission, on a complete streets, um, project. And they've been putting in some of these crosswalks, and trying to make Nashua a lot more walkable, um, to try to increase access and, um, get better health outcomes. Swansea was one of the more recent ones to adopt a municipal complete streets policy, and they, they had a complete streets demo along Main Street. Troy was also one of the last three to have a complete streets policy. There were Troy, Swansea, and Hinsdale, all three passed a policy this year, and Troy did a, a demo as well. They put in this little temporary park along the Main Street. Even Windham is getting into the act with, um, crosswalks that have these, these pedestrian refuges in the middle, so that you don't have to cross the entire street in one go. You can cross half of it, and then stop and wait, and check to see if there are any more cars coming, and then cross the rest of the way. So I would like to show you that little demo now. There's, luckily, they did a video of it, so I can show you. They did all of this in just one day. They had a dozen or so volunteers, and they came in, put down temporary tape and, um, temporary paint, and created bike lanes and crosswalks, and took what was a very boring street and turned it into this lively, vibrant area, complete with bike parking and a bike And all the landscaping was donated by a local landscaper, who they just took it back at the end of the day. They had games, they had mini golf for kids, and cafe, um, chess and checkers. And it was, they did it all in the morning, they kept it open for about six hours, and then they took it all down, just to show people what it would be like if Marlborough Street had complete, was a complete street. And you look at this, you go, "Wow, this is a really cool place. I'd really like to hang out here." It's, and the residents just loved it. And so, as a matter of fact, they are, they, um, they've applied for funding to implement this, this type of complete street here on, on Marlborough Street. It's right near King State College. Marlborough Street goes from, from Main Street, and there's, um, a bus stop, goes from Main Street out towards Optical Avenue, where there are a bunch of, of large employers. Oh yes, there's bike decoration and demonstration of these unusual bicycles. Um, of course, yoga. What complete street, street would be complete without yoga, right? Or a stilt walker? Or ice cream, for that matter. I think the most expensive thing of this whole demonstration was the temporary tape. And they got someone to donate that. So, there you have the demo, and I just wanted to, um, that's what it looked like before. Pretty boring street with a wide sidewalk where people don't really walk, they just, they just drive through. Um, and, oh, I just, so here's the before, and there's the after, during the demo. It just, you wouldn't think it was the same place.
No, I just, I was just thinking.
So, what can you do? Well, you can start a conversation about complete streets and their benefits, or you could have a demo of your own. Um, I'm sure that the people who put on the demos in the southwest region would be delighted to help if you wanted to have a demo here. Um, they, I know they've been helping other cities in other parts of the state who want to do a demo. I think Exeter's trying to do a demo. Um, we've had, in, in my region, Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission region, we had a, a one-day demo in Francis Town, which is where I live, tiny little place, um, because we lost our crosswalk, we wanted it back. And then, um, Deerfield and Windham all had a complete streets demos of, of specific little projects. So, um, so you can have a demo, or you could think about having a complete streets municipal policy, where you would encourage or incentivize complete streets features that would make the streets more attractive to people who, who want to get around under muscle power, or who, or especially in retail areas, where you would want to encourage people to explore on foot, rather than just drive through as quickly as possible. And then, if you're, as you're thinking about policy, you might want to think about funding, and we just had the, the applications in for the twenty sixteen Transportation Alternatives projects. And so, this would be a good time to start thinking about twenty eighteen, the twenty eighteen round, and talking to people about what projects they might like, and building support for those projects, and making sure that you've got a really strong application, because the, the demand for that money is fierce. I think they had, um, the applications added up amount of to about seven times the amount of available funding. So, it, tap grants are in demand. So, I would like to entertain questions, if you have any.
Can I, I mean, I know Mulberry Street in Keene.
Microphone, sir.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry, Mark. Come around a little bit, I'll come around.
Yeah. I'll come back here and do my job again.
I'm familiar with Mulberry Street in Keene, but the point I was, would wonder is that that isn't a main thoroughfare. I mean, Keene has a lot of advantages, in that the main roads around Keene go past the town, one, one oh one, or whatever they call it, doesn't actually impinge on the town center. My concern always is that although I, I totally appreciate what you're trying to do, we have also to think about the ability of the traffic to get through, and I always would say, the worst problem with Merrimack is that we have Route Three going straight plumb through the center of the town, and it, therefore, anything you do tends to make, um, movement in the town much more difficult. We've, I mean, I just, instance, coming from my house to here, I, if I took the main roads, I go through about eight or nine sets of traffic lights. Can you give us some idea of how you think we can improve traffic flow without traffic lights and all these timed pedestrian crossings, which the kids push, and they sit, we all sit and look at everything for twenty seconds? You know, it seems to me that we've got to achieve what you're trying to achieve, but not basically increase travel times for-
Right.
-people. Could you give some ideas?
Um, I cannot give you ideas for your specific street-
No, I'm not looking-
But I could tell you who you talk to.
Yes.
So, for example, um, the city of Dover has done some amazing projects where they have used small rotaries, roundabouts, to, to get people through and make it possible for people to, is that your pet project?
I love round, as, as, as an Englishman, ex-Englishman-
Right, right.
-I love roundabouts, and I don't like traffic lights, yeah.
I, I used to live in Cookham, west of, north of Maidenhead. Anyway, um, but they've, they've managed to use different types of traffic control that also make it safer for bicyclists and pedestrians-
Yeah.
...to get through those intersections. Um, in Keene, if there's Route nine, nine, ten, and twelve, as they go up, um, from one oh one, there was no way to make that safe, so they built a bridge across it.
I agree.
Um, and so that's an example. Second Street in Manchester is, is a mess.
Yeah.
And, and there, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission is working on complete streets improvements for Second Street that will help improve both traffic flow and the safety of, of everyone concerned, the drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists, all. Because I, once you start making these improvements to accommodate all users, you're not just prioritizing pedestrians and bicyclists, you're trying to make it safe for everyone by, by getting, well, one of the nice things about roundabouts is that you, you actually do increase the throughput, as opposed to traffic lights where people, where it's stop and go, and stop and go, and stop and go. You can actually, even though you go slowly through the intersection, you still get through in a shorter amount of time than if you have to wait at a light, on average.
I have to say, everything you have said is music to my ears. And my colleagues will hear it again and again. Thank you very much for that comment.
Yes. Um, and I, I meant to mention that there was a bill in, um, that passed this spring that created a complete streets study committee, a legislative study committee, and they just issued their report, um, at the big, at the first of November, and I can show you the, um, the recommendations. So, after, after meeting every two weeks during September and October, there's, this committee, made up of, of, um, two senators and three state representatives, recommended the following. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation, either through existing rulemaking authority or through legislative-directed rulemaking where applicable, should work with stakeholders to create more formalized criteria to help prioritize complete streets-related project applications by municipalities where applicable. Create a guidebook to aid municipalities in implementing complete streets, including how to further encourage walking, biking, and a transit system within municipalities. And update any out-of-date documents, such as our state's minimum geometric guidelines for local roads and streets, to aid in the implementation of complete streets programs. Um, you prob-, as planners, you probably know that the, the suburban guideline for, for the street, the geometric cross-section for streets, is way out of date. It was done in the seventies, I think, or maybe early eighties, and it doesn't reflect what our needs are today. So, the committee felt that that should be updated, and the, um, the DOT people who were at these hearings agreed that they were well out of date. The other recommendation by this committee is to submit legislation to authorize two and a half million in state funds to create a unique New Hampshire-based complete streets pilot program, with a goal of minimizing red tape and involving greater municipality match percentages. Such a pilot program should also involve a report from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation that includes the number and types of grant applications received and funded, the estimated return on investment from the grants, and any other relevant information necessary to evaluate the effectiveness of the pilot program. So these are two different recommendations. One is about the money, and the other has three policy elements, and there, we may see two bills coming out of this for the twenty seventeen legislative session. But it was, there were people who came to these hearings were pretty much in agreement that if New Hampshire wants to stay competitive with, with other New England states and with other states in the nation, that we have to start making our streets, and I don't mean country roads, I mean streets where people do economic activity, they need to be more accessible to people on foot and by bicycle and for transit, to attract millennials, and also to make it possible for seniors to age within their community, not necessarily in their own homes, which would, which would be nice, but you know, if you live out in the middle of nowhere, it's really hard to get services to you. So, at least the idea of having people aging in their own communities, you, you keep that institutional knowledge, I mean, I, I'm sure you're aware that we face a crisis in volunteers to serve on boards like this. I mean, you, you guys are unusual. I'm looking around, and your, your average age is much lower than most boards, so you're lucky. Um, a lot of boards are, are aging out. I mean, a mo-, a lot of-
You're looking at this side and the chairman, the other-
Yeah. No, I mean, you know, a lot of boards, the average age is in the seventies, so, so we need-
Well, Alster's like a buck forty or something like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. By the way, is that, is that report you've just highlighted, is that available on, can one get at it?
It is, um, what I'll do is send it to Nelson-
That will be one-
-so that he can send it around.
Absolutely.
I'll send it along with a handout that has studies that, that talk about those benefits that I was mentioning in the, in the presentation, so you can get at the data behind those assertions. But I would say that if you are looking to make some of your streets, and, and, you know, you might not want to start with Route three, you might want to start somewhere else. Um, I don't know, or you could, if you wanted to be ambitious, um-
It's, it tends to be the one that everybody would want to use. I mean, that's where all the commercial activity is-
Yeah, that's where the retail is, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I get that it's probably the most difficult one to manage, but-
Yeah.
-it's where the interest is.
Right.
You talked in a couple of places about reports that measured property values and the impacts in streets. Can you tell me more about those reports and what they found? I know that you're gonna send us some links to them later, but-
Right.
-if you could discuss them a little bit, uh, greater detail, that'd be interesting.
All right. Let me, um, go to my slides that say, so I can... In, in one of the studies, it showed that houses with above-average levels of walkability command a premium of four to thirty-four thousand dollars more than homes with average levels of walkability. I also, let's see, the-
Do you know how you define walkability, or how-
How that's measured?
Um, I think they, in that particular study, they, I believe they used WalkScore, which is owned by, was it Red Hat Real, I forget, there's some, but anyway, it's a, it's a- But anyway, it's a, it's a measure of whether you can walk to, to destinations like the grocery store and the commercial center.
I think I had some experience poking around the website for WalkScore before. And in a sense, you can enter any address in the country and it'll give you what their score is based on, and their website lists what the criteria is, how far it is to a, a school, a park, a dry cleaner, a restaurant.
Right.
You know, pharmacy. And it's a one to a hundred scale. And I think when I was playing around with it, out front of our library was about our best score and it was fifty-six, I think, back then, a couple of years ago, when I poked around with it.
Not too many people live in that area. Unfortunately, where Merrimack is very rural. I mean, most of Merrimack is a zero or a very close to zero walkability score.
Sure.
And, and to go in and change that in those residential areas would be an astronomical chore.
Yeah, I don't think that it makes sense to propose those kind of things.
I don't think we can even think of that. And so, we can, we can modify our downtown area if there's a downtown along Route Three and Babu's Lake and stuff like that. But, um, I, I don't know. It just seems like there's a tremendous opportunity to spend money. And, and so, since I'm talking now and kind of took the floor, do you have any thoughts or comments on maintenance and or wintertime use or travel?
Yes, I do, actually. Let me just finish what I was saying. There's a study in New York, they did some, a lot of improvements and they found that retail sales increased forty-nine percent near protected bike lanes in, compared to three percent in the rest of the borough. And, um, another, another study showed that retail, retail properties with a WalkScore of eighty are valued fifty-four, fifty-four percent higher than those with a WalkScore of twenty and they have a forty-two percent higher net operating income. So that's just to finish up the answer to you. As far as maintenance goes, um, the State Department of Transportation has an internal policy that they do not plow sidewalks. And they also will not repaint bicyc, they will not repaint crosswalks unless they're in front of a school. Now, that may change. We've, um, we're seeing a shift at Department of Transportation towards complete streets. They now have a complete streets webpage on the DOT website. And the commissioner encouraged the Bicycle Pedestrian Transportation Advisory Committee, which advises DOT and the commissioner, to broaden their scope, invite in transit and become more of a complete streets advisory committee. And that has, that's in the process of happening. So, um, and at these hearings, we heard a lot, a lot more support for complete streets than we've heard from DOT over the years. So, um, I think we may see a shift at the Department of Transportation in terms at least of painting. And especially if they get some of the newer technology for painting where you could just program it in to do what you need instead of having to come back with a separate crew to do bike lanes and whatnot. Plowing, that's a problem. And, and one of the things that Transport New Hampshire is planning to do is hold a sidewalk summit at, at some point next year. It'd be nice to hold it over the winter on a snowy day, but I'm not sure we can do that. But where we would have municipalities, maybe the New Hampshire Municipal Association, complete streets advocates, um, people with disabilities, their advocates, to all talk about what it means to have walkability in the winter. You know, is it, is it enough to have a sidewalk that's only open two-thirds of the year? ADA says no. But there's, there's the, the discouragement for a lot of municipalities is that they don't want to have to plow the sidewalks. And New Hampshire is unusual in, in the country in not requiring their property owners to plow and maintain their own sidewalks. That's, a lot of states do require that. So, um, and the, that court case from Tilton, where the, um, the town of Tilton was sued because they didn't keep the sidewalk plowed and it was the only way that that fellow could get from his apartment to the grocery store and the pharmacy. And they just put up a sign that said sidewalk closed. And so he had to ride in, in the street in his motorized wheelchair. That court case went to the Supreme Court and it was, the decision was very narrow. So it did not provide guidance for, for broader, a broader decision for municipalities. And if you're interested, the New Hampshire Municipal Association has it, has a whole paper on that court case and what it means for sidewalks. And, well, which basically says, we don't know yet, it'll probably take another court case to decide.
Thank you for explaining that because I've read the case and came to the same conclusion, but I've heard that the case cited and miscited so many times to mean other things than that, that I, I think that's the first time I've ever heard somebody make a presentation that agreed with what I thought of the case when I read it.
Yeah, it was a very narrow decision and it does, it, it doesn't give an answer for the broader question.
No, and it's not that unusual for courts to do that where their first foray into an area is intended to kind of put people on notice that you need to start paying attention to this before they issue a decision that is sort of broad and sweeping and has Tilton or whatever town essentially crushed under the weight of a decision. So, you take baby steps in that direction, kind of put people on notice to start focusing on it.
Right.
And maybe the second decision or the third decision is the one that really is more emphatic.
Right. I do know that after that case was, was settled, DOT saw cancellations of, of a lot of sidewalk projects because it scared municipalities. So we really need to come up with a solution to that. And I, I think all the different stakeholders need to come together and talk about it and see what would be the most equitable solution for the towns and the people who want to use the sidewalks. Um, the other thing, let's see. Oh, what was it? I wanted to tell you something about, um, about funding. There, oh, I know what it was. The, these tap grants, have you, has Merrimack had one?
Yes, we, we have one in progress right now and we've applied for another one this year.
Okay, so you do know that there's quite a lot of, that the, the reporting requirements are pretty onerous in, in, for the tap grants because they're part of the federal highway.
It's a very lengthy and expensive process.
Right, so you have to have a full-time LPA certified employee as the person in charge and all that.
Well, we've got, yeah, we were able to do that and it's, it, it only, it, it, there is a maximum amount of money that you need to have in your plan. And, um, you need to have matching funds from the town.
Right.
And we've been able to do that with a trail, actually not a sidewalk, but a trail along the South Heagan River. And we have that in progress right now.
Oh, good.
And we've applied for another grant to do some work along Route Three and along what we call Woodbury Street, which is a street that connects the high school to the downtown business area. And, uh, we're hoping that we'll get an award for that one, too.
Okay, yes, because I think there's a floor of two hundred thousand and a ceiling of eight hundred thousand on those grants.
Yeah.
That's, it's, it's a nice sorts of money, but it's, you know, it, it has to be a fairly large project in order to, to be, to qualify and to be worth having all this, this, um, these onerous reporting requirements. So that's why, that's why the Legislative Study Committee made the second recommendation of authorizing some state funds for a pilot program because they wanted to be able to fund some, some small projects without the, the.
Yeah.
Those requirements that.
You know, this come, these, a lot of these requirements come from federal.
They, they do come from federal.
It's federal money and so.
Yeah.
You, 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 you won't get around that unless we.
Well, if it's state funds.
But if it was all state, yeah, that would be different.
Right. And so what they were thinking is maybe if they, if there was a pot of money that came out of state funds and then it was, they made it a fifty-fifty match instead of eighty-twenty, which is what the tap funds are, that municipalities would be able to do smaller projects that, that didn't have as many strings attached, as much red tape involved. Yes?
I have, um, more questions and want to know more about some of the things you said about attracting millennials and what that's about. Where does that information come from or that idea?
Um, the US Public Interest Research Group did a study on the driving habits of millennials and also their preferences for getting around. And, um, it, it does vary a lot according to which, which age chunk within the millennial generation you're talking about and also whether you're talking about a rural, rural area or an urban area. I know that some of the high-tech companies in Manchester are having trouble attracting skilled workers. Both in Manchester and the, um, the seacoast towns Dover, Somersworth and Rochester with like Safran and some of those other high-tech companies out near the airport in Somersworth. They're having a lot of trouble attracting skilled workers to their companies because the people that they hire, they don't want to live, people they want to hire don't want to live where they have to drive everywhere. They want to live in a place where they can bike and walk and take transit. And if they have to have a car, they can rent a Zipcar for an hour or two or a day if, if they have to. But they don't want the, the, um, the ownership issues. Now, that could be partly because it's, because they've been through a recession and they're saddled with student loan debt and it may be that as they get older, they'll want to own cars. But, but at, at the moment, it's hard to attract, um, new skilled, younger skilled workers because of their preference for living in a city and having access to all these amenities. So I know Manchester and Nashua and, and the seacoast area are trying to become the sort of vibrant place that does attract these young workers.
So what does that mean for a town like Merrimack? Because we're not going to get transit and.
No.
And sidewalks and bike lanes and then all, obviously all these interconnections got to lead somewhere. And so if you don't have, you know, a place that has concerts and a place that has, you know, where you're going to go, where do you walk to?
Movies and restaurants and entertainment.
Exactly. No, I think for a place like Merrimack, it, it would be more about having an age-friendly community so that you have, I, I think you'd probably be more likely to address the needs of your aging population so that you have a place that is attractive and comfortable for people of all ages and abilities. So, that would help you, um, well, it would help with the, the seniors who are aging and who want to stay in Merrimack. It'll, and it would also help, once you, once somebody does come into Merrimack, if you can get them out of their car, it's been proven they will spend more than if they drive from place to place to place. They'll, they'll get out of the car and they will spend more as they explore on foot. So I would say you have different needs than, than a metropolitan area, an urban area. You're, you're unlikely to get transit unless you suddenly gain a lot in population. I mean, there's a certain minimum population density before transit makes sense. But you do have, um, you do have a population that is going to stop driving and you have a population, a, a smaller population of people who have never been able to drive or who lose the ability to drive through accident or illness. And providing transportation for them is something that you might want to think about. I, do you, do you know what, what, um, transportation options do you have in Merrimack? I know there are various, um, volunteer driver programs and, and door-to-door community transportation.
I don't know a whole lot about it in terms of what options are available here.
Well, I should know, but I don't have it on the table.
In fact, it's more serious than that because we can't even, we haven't yet been able to persuade the Manchester and Nashua Transit authorities who have their buses to even stop at our outlet mall. They go tearing past, they won't even stop in our outlet mall. So, I don't quite know how we, we bullied them into stopping.
Ah, you get some of the retail establishments to subsidize it.
That's, that's what they're looking for. I, I've had some discussions with the Nashua Transit people and basically they wanted a subsidy from the town.
Right.
And that was not granted by the, by the town council or, or others in the past or, or I guess from local, uh, uh, local businesses. However, that said, there is a service for handicapped people which they can pay for that will take them to, uh, Desert Lane Mall and those kind of places in Na, in Nashua.
Paratransit, yeah.
Yeah, parat, yeah, paratransit. But you have to be qualified in some way to.
And then it's two dollars a trip or something like that. It's not that much and, and Merrimack does subsidize that a little bit.
Oh, they do, okay, I didn't know.
In order to have that service come to town with Nashua.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure what you had here. I know that some of the towns to the west of Nashua, the South Heagan Valley Transportation Collaborative, they, they contract with Nashua Transit to provide door-to-door transportation for seniors and people with disabilities. And they, they use, they get, um, funding from a particular federal program and then they provide a twenty percent match by getting a contribution from each of the towns that's served. Now, in the case of, of Manchester Transit, they, they have shopper shuttles that go to a couple of grocery stores that are subsidized by the grocery stores themselves. So, the, I believe they get, I believe they get their local match from, from the grocery stores. And so they go outside of Manchester to take residents, I think to Market Baskin, Hookset. And then, um, there was a Goff's Town shopper shuttle as well, I think.
Yeah.
So. So it is possible to get service that goes to the, the, um, outlet mall, but you have to organize it so that the, the mall businesses help pay for that local match. That's the thing that really stops service from expanding is the local match because it's really hard to get. The, the federal funds for transit are there and available, but in order to utilize them, you have to come up with a local match for operating. And in most of the country, it's fifty percent federal, twenty-five percent state and twenty-five percent local. But in New Hampshire, there's been zero state operating match since two thousand nine. And so, the transit operators have to ask the, the municipalities for the entire fifty percent, which is really hard as costs keep getting downshifted to the municipalities, as I'm sure you're intensely aware. It becomes harder and harder to get that local match. So, creative partnerships with businesses is a good way to increase the amount of transportation options. We got off complete streets, but you know, transit's part of complete streets.
So, just briefly, the pictures you were showing of, of flowers and landscapes and, and tables and chairs and all that on the side of the road look great in the summertime. I, I can't imagine what they're going to look like now or for the next three or four months. Um, I'm sure all the chairs and tables are going to get removed and you're going to have a big empty street that looks boring again. Maybe it's wider now or maybe it's painted up or.
It depends on what your purpose is, what your outcomes are that you desire. Concord Main Street is going to look the same in the winter. They've got street furniture and they have the broad sidewalks that are gathering places. And they have, um, they already do plow the sidewalk on Concord Main Street. And some of the, some of the property owners opted to have buried snow melting cables. It's actually a fluid, these tubes of fluid, and so those sidewalks will clear themselves. It'll be interesting to see what the costs are for maintaining, for plowing versus melting, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the economics end up being with Concord in terms of what it costs them versus what they see in return for, um, businesses and all of that stuff. But my office is right there and every day at lunch I go out and, um, visit any one of the ten or twelve restaurants that are within a half a block of my office. And it's a great vibrant place even right through the wintertime. Now, nobody's sitting out on the sidewalk at a table. Now, nobody's sitting out on the sidewalk at a table having their lunch in the winter. Um, but you're still going to all the same businesses and they decorated all of it for Christmas and there's caroling and there's just all sorts of stuff that goes on. I don't know whether that could be recaptured in a smaller town other, that doesn't have all of that activity. And I don't know whether that is just something that's, um, a, a cost that Concord has decided to bear and whether it comes back to them in their tax revenues or in the business development and whether it works all down. I mean, lots of towns can do some very spectacular things if they just choose to buy that result, but whether it makes economic sense or not. And maybe it does, I just don't know.
Right. Well, Concord took advantage of a Tiger Grant in two thousand eight-ish to, to get that project going. But they are keeping careful tabs on the results, on the number of businesses that come in, on, um, their, the Concord downtown organization is, is surveying the business owners to see if they've seen an uptick in, in business and that sort of thing. So it'll be interesting to see a year from now what the results are. But there, there's intense interest in, in the returns. I will say that Dover, uh, has been doing this much longer and they have been tracking the return on investment and they've seen a large return on investment. You should talk to Chris Parker, who's, um, um, Assistant Mayor and, and Head of Planning and Development or something. I, I forget. I can send you his email address. But, but he's been doing this for a long time in Dover and they have seen a big return on investment and they're, they're seeing more and more businesses come into the downtown area in Dover. And they're, they're actually, there's a business downtown that's got a surface parking lot and the developer's gonna get rid of the surface parking lot, cause they put in a, an, a multi-story garage. And they're gonna get rid of the surface parking lot and put in a multi-use building there because the property values are going up and the demand for, for, um, retail and business space there and apartments is going up. Because it's, people like living there. They like walking there. They like doing business there.
Well, that was another question that was kind of on my mind is Merrimack is a driving community today. And to get people to these areas, these main streets where we could in fact put in sidewalks and stuff like that, they're gonna have to drive in, cause
Right.
if you're three or four miles out on a street that's not a complete street, you, you're not gonna make it to downtown. And if you're elderly, you're not gonna be making it that far anyway, probably. Not that people can't, but most, I think, won't. So do you guys look into or talk about or deal with parking facilities or parking issues? Or where do you put the cars to get the people to get out of their cars and walk?
Um, that's all part of, of the intersection between land use and transportation. And we have, um, partners in our network of, um, well, well, Transport in Hampshire, I didn't even explain who we are. We're the backline organization of the statewide transportation initiative. And we have, um, partners across the state in lots of different sectors, including housing and land use and economic development and health and environment. And the people that we partner with in, in zoning and land use and housing, they understand how intimately connected transportation is with all of those things. And so in your master plan, you may have some, some ideas for how you want to deal with the aging population. You may have, um, some ideas where, um, multi-use buildings could go in or, um, multi-generational housing could go in that is in a more compact area where people can walk. So you might, you might have an apartment building or a condo with apartments where you have, um, senior, well, for example, Keen has off Railroad Square. They have that new development which has, um, a mixture of subsidized housing and market rate housing. And the, they've got a mixture of, of well-heeled residents who wanna live there so they can walk everywhere. And, um, lower-income people who live there because they have to walk to work. They, they, they can't afford a car. So, and then on top of that, there, there's seniors who can live there. So I don't know what your master plan looks like, but you may have addressed this issue in your master plan and, and talked about how you can meet the, the, uh, future needs of an aging populace. I mean, we're, we keep, um, vying with Vermont and Maine for first place and, and oldest state in the nation. And so, I, I mean, I could see having more compact mixed-use development along Route Three along with all the retail places. So, you know, it may not be that everyone drives everywhere in Merrimack in the future. It may be that you have enough, enough people who want to walk places, who want to live close to their, their retail establishments or their doctor, their pharmacy, who would wanna live in, in that denser area. You'll still have the rural area or the, or the suburban area, if you will. And that's gonna be most in New Hampshire. There, there aren't that many areas, but, but still, even within little tiny towns, they're trying to revitalize their town centers so that they're a more interesting place to be. And so that people who might want to live above the shop could do that. You know, they could have a, a retail establishment and then live in the upstairs area. We have some gorgeous, gorgeous town centers in New Hampshire, historic, like, like, um, Claremont and Laconia. And, um, that, these municipalities are working really hard to bring vitality back and getting people to, to live in the town centers and open businesses in the town centers and, and get out and walk and shop and dine. That's all part of it.
I think that our master plan accommodates some of that in the, along DW Highway. Mixed use and multi-use and higher-density development is possible. And there's an elderly overlay that's also kind of in the middle of town as well. But I don't know that we've answered very well Tom's question about parking. So for example, I live a couple of miles away and if I wanna, when I go to Concord where I work, I got a nice parking garage that my office gives me. And then once I'm there, I can go to the Rite Aid that's downtown and I can go to the restaurants at lunch and a shoe store and a couple antique shops. And I get my hair cut there and I knew all of that stuff because my company gave me this nice place to park in the parking garage.
Right.
Here in Merrimack, if I wanted to come down and, you know, uh, ha- have dinner and go to the next store and the next store, somewhere has gotta be home base where I leave that car.
That's right.
And go do something.
So you, you might wanna think about having, um, parking lots that are at the two ends of a retail district and tucked back behind the buildings so that the, the streetscape is still attractive, but people have a chance to park and then walk down the length of the retail district. Or if you have, like you said, if you have multi-use buildings in that area, then, um, they can park behind and then enter, you know, I, like, um, downtown Manchester, there are some, there's a lot of redevelopment of some of those tall buildings that used to be office buildings. Now they're turning them into condos and apartments. And they, several of them have parking behind the building. Um, Manchester has a lot of alleys and so there's, there's often space where you can tuck in parking in, in behind the building. So, um, I would guess that you could plan the parking as part of the multi-use development, the mixed-use development, and still make an attractive area for people. I guess basically
I think you can when we're, as a planning board, if we're gonna get a proposal from a developer and we can talk about them accommodating the parking for their needs and if it's residential and they've got and that can be designed in an attractive way and in a compact way. And it, it does help for those people that might live in that multi-use development that's in the more compact area.
Right.
In terms of there being some public parking where I don't live in this area, but I can park on one end and I can go to dinner and then I can walk to the next thing and the next thing. I don't know that we've got land areas that are within the town's control or that might hit the market and the town could obtain control of it. Or, or the appetite on behalf of the town to go and buy that and make parking lots. Or whether some private developer would ever have an interest in doing that. So, um, I think that that's where you, we're, we're sort of a long way from being able to see that kinda stuff come to fruition, if ever. Um, and, and whether it will ever make sense to, I mean, in downtown Concord and downtown, downtown, parking lots are lucrative. I mean, that's probably the, sometimes the highest and best use for property is parking because of what it costs. But I don't know if we're ever gonna be there here.
Right. I, I don't know about ever because technology is changing so fast, but, but, but you have to, you have to do what makes sense for your town at the time while also looking forward at demographic trends. So, um, I just, I just know that what I see in a lot of other towns where they're trying to make the town center more attractive to tourists and to, to people who wanna live and work in town rather than having to commute. So.
Is that sort of an independent intention by these towns? Or are they rescuing a downtown that's aging and failing and trying to revitalize it?
Some of them are revitalizing, but some are looking around at other towns and going, hmm. You know, we, we're not there yet, but we could see it coming and so let's do something about it now. So, um, you know, Hinsdale, I, I don't, I can't speak for them whether they're revitalizing or in prevention mode, but, but, um, but Franklin, I know I was part of a charrette up there too. Um, they wanted to make Franklin a, a place, what was the phrase? A place for all ages or a ci- city for all ages. And so they were trying to get ideas for how to reuse their mill buildings and how to make the downtown a more attractive place. And, yeah, I mean, having, having mixed use.
So our town ends up being a bit of, i- in an odd position that way, at least in my view. So we don't have the traditional New England downtown where all the buildings touch each other and they've got a little sidewalk and some on-street parking and you kinda go down that strip of things. The old town center. And so there's some folks who long for that and say, well, we oughta create a town center. But then you look at so many other New England towns who have had a really economically unsuccessful downtown over the years because of the way that life moves on and life changes. And they're having to spend a lot of money to try and revitalize something. And of course, we don't have that. We don't have to invest in revitalizing it. But do we want it? Do we wanna go create it? So that we can have that economic activity that looks like n- now downtown Concord and downtown Keen? And, um, how do all of those different competing interests play out in a town like this where we don't have something that we've gotta go rescue because it's there from a hundred and fifty years ago?
You might wanna talk to Windham, cause they're trying to create a, a town center. Cause they've never had a real strong town center. And I know that their, their Complete Streets demo was about that, the little strip where they're trying to, to get things going.
We have a town center committee and a desire to have a kind of a focal town center, but I don't know that anybody's proposing that we build the classic New England town center where you got a couple of blocks of a main street where all the buildings are touching each other and
Right.
you know, there's no parking for the property itself and the, you know, complete a hundred percent lot coverage and all of those things.
Sure. It, it really depends on the outcomes. And that's, I always go back to that. You should be really clear on the outcomes that you want before you decide what strategies to put into effect. And, and that's what I, I've been, um, talking with the Department of Transportation about is that when they go to a town, town, well, or when a town comes to them and says, we wanna redesign this street or this road that happens to be a state highway, there oughta be a two-way conversation about what outcomes do you want for that street? Do you want, is this a main artery and you wanna get cars through as quickly as possible? Or is it your town center and you're trying to revitalize it and, or you're trying to increase retail sales? Or, um, have you decided that public health is, um, is improvement is a main outcome that you want? And so how you go about things really depends on the outcomes that you want for, for your town as a whole, but also for a particular area that you're thinking of, of developing or changing the infrastructure within.
Because of the way we're configured with DW Highway being kind of the main north to south and the place that you would make walkable if you'd make it, I'm not sure that there's a huge consensus either way. I think there's a great many people who commute down DW Highway and just wanna get from one end to the other as fast as they can.
Right.
And are not looking for traffic to be slowed down with more crosswalks and sidewalks and all those kinds of things. And, um, they're probably not at all enthusiastic about traffic calming measures like narrower lanes and less lanes and those kinds of things. I don't know what the answer is. Was that?
Roundabout.
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts, right. Well, I, I travel one fourteen through Goffstown a lot. Cause I'm on the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission and the TAC. And so going from Francis Town up through there. And I've, that, that new tiny little roundabout that's in a residential area of, of Goffstown on, on Mast Road there. I find it, it makes an amazing difference to the throughput. And it used to be, I guess it was a, a stop sign and, um,
The one at Wallace Road in Goffstown by the high school? No, not by the high school, but Wallace Road.
I can't remember the name of it. That might be it. But anyway, since they put in that, the tiny little roundabout, it, even at, at rush hour or, you know, school hours, the traffic moves. It, it'll, it'll back up some, but it doesn't stop. It just slows down and it just, and people get where they need to go. So, I don't know. That was just an example. I actually wanted to ask, if I may, I wanted to ask you a question because I, I went, did a little searching and I noticed that you had a, a BikePad master plan in the works. Did that get completed?
It's a, it's a long story. There's certainly a desire from the planning board standpoint, the master plan to get some BikePad ma- master plans, uh, developed. I don't know, th- there's, there's not all, not consensus with town council and with, um, a- all of the pieces that have to come together to make some of that happen. And some of it is, um, I think not great communication in terms of expressing even what we're trying to accomplish, so there's misunderstandings on that. I think that there is a desire to have one, at least from, from some folks. I'm not sure we're as progressing as quickly as we could down that path. And some of that is just us as a planning board or a subcommittee planning board, you know, staying on top of it all the time as we, as we could or should, but.
Well, maybe it wasn't clear what it was you wanted from it at, at the time. So maybe it will become clear and the momentum will return. So. So I wanted to mention two more things. One is when you think about infrastructure improvements that would, uh, that would make it better for, for bicyclists and pedestrians and people of all ages and abilities, you should think about networks of, of connected streets. So in other words, a little strip of sidewalk here and a little piece of bike lane over there is, can be almost a waste of money if it doesn't connect with other destinations. So, um, having, have, like, for example, I'll use Manchester even though, you know, you, you don't have the population density, but you can have, you can have a whole bunch of streets that people feel comfortable riding on over here and then another section over here, but if there's a, a place where people won't cross, then you've got two islands of accessible streets. And, um, if you had, if you had one little infrastructure project that would connect the two, you would double the number of destinations. So there's a way of determining where those best return on investment in projects would be, which is called level of traffic stress. And, um, the Nashville Regional Planning Commission has done a study of the, of the Nashua streets for both bicycle level of traffic stress and pedestrian level of traffic stress. of the, of the Nashua streets for both bicycle level of traffic stress and pedestrian level of traffic stress. And if you do that and you can, you can actually use objective data on width and shoulders and parking and travel speed, um, that's in a database at DOT. You can, um, you can find out where the low-stress streets are and where the high-stress streets are. And you can, you can actually map out where you've got these, these little islands of low stress that are severed by a high-stress, either one, a street that's, that's high-speed or, or, um, just difficult to cross. So if you're thinking of doing just one or two projects to start with, you might wanna talk to Nashua Regional Planning Commission about, about mapping your streets and finding out where people feel safe walking and bicycling and where they don't feel safe. And then see, see where the most connectivity could be gained with one project or a couple of projects. And that might be the, the best investment of your funds, so.
We ain't got any funds, so.
Right, well, you know, that's a problem everywhere. Um, although I think, well, we'll have to wait and see, but I think, um, there may be some increases in the TAP funds in the next, next round, so.
Um, does, I, I wanna allow the folks that have come here to listen, if they have any comments or questions that they'd wanna put forward. This isn't, it's necessarily a planning board discussion. Does anybody wanna weigh in on anything? Have any questions?
Do you work with Plan New Hampshire?
I do, I do.
Can I get you to, let's use the, the portable microphone as we, if you wanna go around and have conversations because the folks at home and the, and the recording for television don't capture it otherwise.
My name is Douglas Dahl, I'm with Ed Cat. I'm just curious how you might work with Plan New Hampshire and what is the relationship of Plan New Hampshire and Transport New Hampshire with the government of the state of New Hampshire?
Um, neither organization is related to the government of the state of New Hampshire. Um, Transport New Hampshire is actually, I mean, if, to describe my job in, in one word, it would be sheepdog. I, I help people get organized and talk to each other and, um, or matchmaking. I do a lot of matchmaking, you know, you need, like when I said, well, you should talk to, to Keen or Swansea if you wanna do a demo. Um, or go talk to Windham about town centers. So I, I do a lot of that. Um, I work, I know a lot of people at DOT and I do talk to them a lot about, about how transportation is funded and how the priorities are determined. I go to the tenure transportation plan hearings every two years, um, all over the state. But I'm, I work with Plan New Hampshire in, um, where things, where our interests intersect, where land use and transportation intersect. Um, so for example, I was on the scoring committee when they just recently handed out some grants through the New Hampshire Housing Association, um, to help municipalities, um, um, update their zoning requirements. So for example, to, to help bring in more affordable housing or more age-appropriate housing. Um, I work with Plan New Hampshire as, as part of the New Hampshire Alliance for Healthy Aging, which is a new initiative that's, that's trying to help create more age-friendly communities and try to put in place the supports that our aging population will need in terms of, um, enough, enough, um, caretaking staff. We're having trouble attracting enough, enough caretakers to take care of the people as they age. Um, and appropriate housing and other supports for people as they age, including transportation.
Thank you.
Any others? Um, more questions but planning board, any further discussion?
No further questions, Mr. Chairman, I think it's been a good presentation. I wanted you to see it and I hope a lot of people are watching it at home. And, uh, we can get some, uh, interest and enthusiasm for doing something.
Rebecca, you spoke of a, a master plan for bike and pedestrians and?
Nelson, you just turned your microphone off, I think.
Sorry, uh, we, you, you mentioned the, uh, need for a bike ped plan in Merrimack. Uh, this is something that was pointed out to us by the state of New Hampshire. The state of New Hampshire doesn't wanna put any more sidewalks on their portion. Some of these roads are owned by the state and some are owned by us. We are in a compact zone in the center of town, so those are town roads. But there are others, and the state wants us to put together a, a comprehensive plan for, uh, we can't seem to get it going, we've had some, uh, objections from certain sectors of the government that, uh, don't think this is a good thing to do. I don't know how else to say it politely.
I, I think Bob said it very clearly, there's no money.
There was no money involved in the requests that we made, uh, directly, but, yeah.
We'll, we'll get there, we're just having a few fits and starts and trying to get off the block and.
And, and I know that National Regional Planning Commission would be happy to help.
They, they were, yes, they have been very helpful to us, yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation, I found it very informative. Um, I, as a planning board, I mean, you, you probably know that most planning boards are, but we are, um, in favor of seeing some more sidewalk development, especially in the town center and places where it's gonna be walkable and used. And, um, so, your presentation is, is great and very helpful for that. I like the idea that some of the efforts around complete streets, um, involve some tables and chairs and some businesses that are, um, focusing outward, um, to make use of that area rather than just saying, um, complete streets is nothing more than adding five feet of pavement to walk on next to it. So, um, that's pretty interesting stuff and, and helpful to me to know.
Well, good, thanks.
Do you have questions or comments for us, or sort of what's the?
Um, I will send the, the handout that has those studies in it to Nelson so he can send it around to you.
Um, get Robert's email address too, deal with the department as well. Nelson's certainly a good, great contact for us, but directly with the department will make it an official record.
His is the only email I have, so that would be super. And then the, the report from the Complete Streets Legislative Study Committee, I'll, I'll send that around. And I think that was it, wasn't it? I don't think there was a third thing. Yeah, I think that was. I think that's it.
The studies on, um, millennials and market value of property and all that stuff were in there as well.
That's all in the handout, yeah.
Okay, that would be great.
It's dense.
It's what?
It's dense, it's full of studies.
That's okay, that's where they should be. Thank you so much for coming out on a rainy evening. I'm glad that we were able to arrange a night that we could do this and here. And I know that, that took a little bit of logistics and some cooperation and so thank you so much for that, I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Um, and I hope that we see each other more often.
Good, that'd be great. And if there's anything I can do to help, let me know.
Thank you so much. Uh, the only other item on our agenda is to adjourn, and so is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second? There, no second, Tom will second that. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any saying, okay, thank you, there are alternates.